The Council of the City of Connersville is now in session, please rise. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Beth Butch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody would please silence their phones. We'll have our invocation by Reverend Eric Hopkins.
Just about with me. Thank you Father, tonight, for your very presence in our life, and we thank you for America. Thank you God for our military to keep us the land of the free. Thank you for those that are gathered together in this room to set the agenda for the meeting tonight. Thank you for your guidance and direction. Keep their families safe as they're here serving our community. We'll give you praise in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like to welcome everyone tonight? We'll go ahead and have roll call.
Councilman Bishop?
Present.
Councilman Mavi?
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Present.
Councilman Nettie?
Present.
Councilwoman Durham?
Present.
Councilman Frank?
Here.
Okay, you have the meetings of the April 2nd meeting. Is there any additions or corrections? If not entertained, a motion to pass is presented.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion to second? To pass the minutes of the April 2nd meeting as presented? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, go on down, the new business. Rosemary, would you like to speak to this?
I'm asking the, to be able to request an additional appropriation for the park, an amount of $30,000. We will be sending out the bids to start Rivers Edge Phase 1, and we do have all the money currently for Phase 1. $200,000 is a matching grant, and the rest is through the Day of Giving and a grant from the foundation. This is just to cover the architect fees for the bidding, for the specs, and for advertising.
Okay, I need a motion to advertise for additional?
Where we recommend that might come from?
Out of the park fund. There is enough money there for them to...
And how much is in that fund right now?
$391,000.
And this is to get the program kicked off, correct, basically?
This is paying the architect to do all the bid specs, get the bid specs advertised, review the bids once they come in, and be able to help award the bids once they come in.
But she does have the money in her fund, so...
Is that all just architectural fee, every bit of it?
Like $16,000 went high for the additional just to make sure we got all the i's dotted and t's crossed.
Jesse, you got anything to add?
Just got it.
Okay.
We've gone over it quite a bit, so...
Alright. This is just here to move the money around in her budget.
Mr. Mayor, I move to advertise for additional appropriation, $30,000 from the park, from the park board, or from the park fund.
Okay, we have a motion to second to advertise. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, Rosemary, does B, C, and D?
Resolution 2018-22 is a resolution to transfer $22,533.93 from the general to non-reverting fu... the first aid, non-reverting fund. And that is the 10% match. That there covers February, March. 10%. The resolution 2018-23 is a resolution to reimburse $150 into the police telephone. Resolution 2018-24 is a reimbursement of $1,124.75 to be reimbursed into the fire pension dependent to the deceased.
Do you want to stop there and take those three only?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. How much do we have if we move this one, that 22,000 over to the non-reverting fund? How much would that make in that fund right now?
Um, well, we just...
It's above 130, isn't it?
Um, it's 174,000 right now, plus the 22, and then we'll be subtracting 27,000 for the Durango that they just purchased for the commander vehicle.
So 27?
So about 29. 179, I'm sorry.
So what was the number, please?
After this ad, after the Durango, about 179,000.
Okay, we need a motion?
I move we pass resolutions, resolutions 2018-22, 23, and 24.
Second.
You have a motion to second? To pass resolutions 2018, 22, 23, 24. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passed. I thought Diana was going to be here tonight. Beth, would you like to speak to this?
I'll speak to it as much as I can. There is actually a 23-page grant agreement that goes along with this as well. This is for refurbishing and renovating private housing, and I did review the entire 23-page agreement this morning. There was nothing out of the way in it. It was exactly what you would expect. It does, the only difference here is, is that you're authorizing for the receipt of these funds, and there is highlighted here a requirement that 10% of the amount of the award would be set aside. So that would be $17,800. And I did not see in that 23-page agreement where there was a requirement for a matching fund, so I don't know if this is set aside and then can later be used, or if this is a matching fund. And I did not have an opportunity to speak to Diana about that.
Excuse me, I'm Joyce McCarty with Star Development. We are the administrators for this project.
Oh, good. I'm glad you're here.
Good, have a seat.
Great year. Great.
Have a seat, thank you.
I know a lot of you guys are new faces, and I'm new to you, so no one really knew who I was.
I knew who you were.
Except for you, yeah. Um, now, on the budget page, if that's your question, as far as matching funds. The match actually, usually is 10% match, but they changed that where there was not, did not have that requirement. But the city allocated $3,700 toward the project. Well, they allocated more than that at the time because we were going for $300,000. But that gave us extra points. It wasn't a requirement, but it gave us extra points. So when we were cut in half as far as the funding, I told Indiana Housing, then we wanted our obligation, that we had said we'd go with 10%. I want that cut in half, too. Took me a little while, but they finally understood that it was still that, you know, that 10%. Or the percentage that we set. It was a little bit under 5, I think. So the city would still be obligated for $3,700 to go toward the project. And in the past, we've always given that toward actual construction money to a contractor's contract.
So it shouldn't really say 10% of the CBG award? It should say $3,700?
In, inside the, what page is that?
That's actually a cover page of the resolution. Looks like it would have been provided to Diana.
Yeah, that was, that was provided with this from Indiana Housing. So no, maybe that is something I need to talk to them about because they had, they had sent out the grant agreement with the resolution, everything, and then they came back and said, "This is a corrected resolution." So now it looks like they need to correct that again.
We've done this three or four times, so...
Oh, yes, yes. Several times.
But have we ever been obligated to do this like this?
10%?
Yeah.
Always. Always.
But this is an additional. This $3,700 is an addition to that, isn't it? Am I correct?
No.
It isn't?
No. Uh-uh.
You could vote to, you could vote to approve a resolution where you would commit $3,700, and then we could get this corrected.
The language is pretty much generally the same, isn't it?
It's identical, and they just kind of, you know, give those out, copy and paste, and, and I did not catch that, that it did say 10%. And it's not required. Because you can see in the actual grant agreement budget, it's only $3,700.
I remember doing this in the past. How many homes would this renovate?
With this, we're required to do six homes. And so, right now, I'm hoping to be able to do at least seven. You know, and we, we establish how much funds is going to go into each home according to the need. We have started meeting with the participants and looking at their houses to see what we think needs to be done and what they would like to have done. So I'm hoping to be able to, to take care of seven homes with this. Because that also includes our fees that we do for administration program delivery and environmental review and lead testing.
And these are homes all over town. They're just not one particular area.
Right, all over town.
Are they in the county and the city, or just the city?
Just the city.
That's what I thought.
We had gotten around 16, 17 applications. And so, what we're going to do, because there's a requirement to meet certain income levels, so many at certain income levels, so many handicapped people, and so many elderly people. So we are going to determine those, and have already determined, the ones that's going to participate first. If there are leftover grant funds as we bid out, why, we'll just keep adding more homes.
Okay.
That's great.
And I will contact all the applicants and let them know.
Is it predominantly exterior? Renovational interior?
No.
It can be anything.
What we try to do is look at what's needed. We do a lot of roofs, and we do a lot of windows in this program. But, you know, a lot of times, we'll do a step-in shower for someone elderly or disabled, or a sidewalk, or even a ramp, you know. It can, it can vary quite a bit. But we inspect the home and make sure that, that what is really needed is addressed first.
What is the cutoff date on this, ma'am?
Um, as far as the whole grant being completely done, we have, we have 18 months, and it says right here, it is September 23rd, 2019. But I'm hoping to be able to move it a little bit faster than that because we do have our people already.
You always do.
We, we try to.
Do a good job.
If the weather and the contractors cooperate.
Your people do a good job with this.
Well, thank you.
So we need $3,700?
$3,700. And that was committed, that was committed earlier last year because this was actually awarded in August of last year, and we are just now getting the grant agreement. This is the longest we've ever waited for a grant agreement before. So we're ready to move forward with it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve $3,700 for the block, community block grant, community development block grant.
Out of, out of what fund?
Out of the, people out of the general.
Okay, we have a motion to pass resolution 2018-25 with a stipulation of $3,700?
Out of general.
Out of the general fund? Is there any more discussion? Need a motion?
I made one.
Yeah, I made one.
Okay.
In a second.
Okay.
In a second.
We have a motion to second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you.
Um, I will need the signed grant agreement so I can send it back to Indiana Housing.
I'll, we usually sign all this after.
Okay, and then you could probably give it to Diana, and she can call me and let me know when it's ready. Or you can.
And when would we get a corrected copy for the resolution?
I will get in touch with Indiana Housing tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go on down to item F. Pending orders 3417, on decreasing the speed limit on Central Avenue from 30th Street to 32nd to 20 miles an hour. Right now, it's 30. Jesse, can you, want to speak to any of this about? You want me to do it? I'll do it. It's about, we have, we're going to have a bike trail and a walking trail there. And when people come out, we want, we want the cars to be slowed down because you're walking up to the trail. And so, we've talked, this is one of the things I want to do is lower the speed limit. Because of the, you're going to have bicycles riding out there. You're going to have people walking out there, and I kind of want the speed limit down. And so, that's what I want to do, so...
Are you no longer going to use the alley as currently marked?
No, that's going, you're going to go up the alley like they normally do, but then you're going to come out on Central Avenue there from, John, can you show that up there?
Show them the sidewalk down there through there, right?
Yeah.
You can have, you can have a lane.
A bike lane and a walking, yeah.
I personally think, I think there are no signs there between 30th Street and 32nd, which I think might lead people to believe that the speed limit is still 40 when you go north of 30th Street. I think that problem could, because it's a wide enough street. It's not just a two-lane street. I mean, it's wider than most of them. I think if you posted it as 30, I think that would...
Well, like I said, the only thing I worry about is a bicycle coming out of there and going out too far and getting clipped.
Well, but you have, you have that, and I think it sets a precedent with these 20-mile speed limits, and you're going to have other people coming and saying, you know, "We've got a problem here or there," or whatever. I just think if, if you had the 30 mile an hour speed limit posted and enforced it, it would, there would be no, I mean, there wouldn't be the false conception that it's still 40, 40 miles an hour north of 30th.
Is there any more discussion on it?
Yeah, going back to my question, do I understand that instead of the current path, which is the alley all the way to Tebustin, that it turns halfway through that block?
Yes.
Okay. And then out onto Central?
Yes.
Okay.
They got it marked up there.
That's marked on here, too.
I mean, I don't see it marked very poor on the map. I understand what you're saying.
20 miles an hour is really, is really slow. And we've got 20 mile speed limits already up in Offutt Park, but I just think that's wide enough to accommodate that. And it's, that will set a precedent, too, for 20 mile speed limits.
Signify, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the alley they're going to be coming out of, right? Yes. Okay, so that puts 30th Street down here. Yes. Yes. The deceleration lane that you are going to create between here and here for bicycles coming out, it's not going to be much. No. Not much at all.
Not, there's no distance.
Keep it in mind, they're coming off of Park Road at 45 to 50 miles an hour. Don't care what the speed limit's at. That's what you're coming out at.
It's a light screen, right?
Yeah, it's a light screen there.
It's an enforcement.
They can't wait to get a speedway.
That's right.
So, I would, I would, not trying to argue the point. I see what you're saying about the 30 degrees, or 30 miles an hour, but the deceleration from here to here is like nothing. So if they think they can still go 30, that means they're at least going to be doing 35.
How hard would it be to paint that street?
Oh, that's the plan, we are going to paint it?
No, I mean, paint it with yellow signs, speed limit signs reduced, bike trail. I mean, make it so it's...
Right.
You're about that.
We're going to have to stop.
I'd rather see it visible. Reducing the speed limit's not going to help.
Right.
Making something visible so people see it and that's forces them to see it now.
We haven't, I don't think we've totally determined what the lane width is going to be here to here for the bicycle lane.
It's plenty wide enough.
But it is wide enough. It'd get a little funny down here where we now have a turning lane.
That's a stop.
Yeah, they're coming to a stop.
You put angular stripes on, is that what your plan is?
Yeah, something along that line.
Yeah.
There'll be bicycles, bicycles, you know. We'll do the best we can. I don't think changing the speed limit slows anybody down.
I don't either.
I totally agree. Now, unless you're going to set a cop up there 24 hours a day.
If it's not enforced, it won't make a darn bit of a...
Especially when it goes from 40, 40, or 45 to 20.
So here, about any kind of speed.
Well, there, there needs to be a sign.
Yeah, well, we will put...
And I think they're going to do, that, that's the plan.
Okay.
To put a sign there, no matter what.
We will put signs up.
Yeah.
Carol, what do you think about it? Get your names on this, I presume?
Well, I asked her to do it, so she...
Were you going to speak to her? I'm sorry?
I think if you post 20, it's 20. People do usually go to speed limit, believe it or not. I know it looks, doesn't look that way, but if you sit and run radar, most people are doing the speed limit, so...
If you see a cop car with a radar gun, you're going to go the limit.
I mean, safety's a top priority here. That's what we've got to look at, especially with bicycles.
Like I said, I worry about a kid on a bicycle riding out through there.
Currently, currently, all of Offutt Park is 20 miles an hour.
Right.
All of Beeson is 30.
Yeah.
And this is a dividing line.
Do people go 20 in Offutt Park?
Yeah.
No.
So 32nd Street is 20?
20.
Yes.
Even going through...
And on that wide of the streets.
The goal of speed and actual is different everywhere, but...
Well, I think you're going to increase the bicycle and pedestrian traffic is what you're going to create. That's what you're going to get.
Well, I think in essence, if we put a 30 mile speed limit there, you're going to reduce the speed because people are going, probably can assume with those markings that it's 40 all the way to the next stop sign. And they probably do. But if you post the speed limit, that...
The truth is, people run more than 20 in the park. It's Mark 15, but they run a lot more than 20s. And there are all kinds of kids in the park.
Harold, is your main concern traffic coming in off of that alley? Is that what you're...
That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking the kids, the kid's going to be riding out of alley, and he's going to, you know, kids think they're invincible. And I'm just worried about a kid riding out of there and getting hit.
Do you have alleys coming out on all streets all over town? You don't have 20 mile speed limit everywhere.
So do you need both a posted sign for speed limit and a posted sign for pedestrian traffic?
Well, we could do that.
For the lane. I think you're going to, you said you were going to paint the lane.
Yeah, we're going to paint the lanes.
Yeah.
You could put a lane...
Right, but they don't see that till they're there.
You could put a lane with visible markers that are three foot tall, too, all the way down the side.
So, whatever, whatever your pleasure is.
I'd rather put the money making it visible.
So if they want a 30 mile an hour, they do nothing because it's already, it's already...
30.
They just need to put a sign.
Yeah, there are just no signs there.
Well, I mean theoretically, you've got a two-block, you've got a two-block area there. I mean, there's two, there's more than two blocks, you know, like between 21st and 24th on Grand. And I know we try to put like stops so that there's not a, a raceway. I mean, and that's a shorter distance to gain that much speed. So I mean, how, how far are you going to get going from the intersection to the next stop sign?
I think that the concern is not the acceleration from 32nd to 30th, but the deceleration from 30th down as we head towards 32nd.
That's what I say, no matter what the speed is, mark the heck out of it.
Yeah.
Well, if they're coming off of Park Road and they hit that stoplight green, it don't make a difference what the speed limit is. They're not going to slow down until they get halfway up through there. I've ridden my bike up there enough, I know.
Okay, is there any more discussion off? Now, I'll either take a motion to pass or no motion to kill.
How about a motion just to put the signs up and, and mark it?
Well, we're going to do that anyway. We don't need to...
Yeah, we're going to do that.
We're going to do that anyway.
So no motion, this is it?
It's it. Okay, is there any, anything, anybody going to make a motion? Okay, if not, toward its ends is no, no motion. Okay. Okay, going down to old business. Anybody got anything they'd like to talk about?
Not necessarily, but miscellaneous, I got something. Plant sale is May 4th and 5th. So even though it's snowing today, those flowers are starting to look beautiful, and it is about time for the frost to stop. May 4th and 5th at CHS, on May 4th is from 3:45 to 6:00 p.m. and 5th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00. So it's that Friday and Saturday, first Friday and Saturday in May.
And on the same note, too, you know, we're going to have Free Friday. And so, that starts this, this Friday. And they'll take up, you get to bring one, one load in free, and you get to bring four tires off the rim. And they could ask for identification, so... Oh, I got one, jumping ahead of myself. Dan, would you like to come up and give us an update on EDG? It'd be like if.
Why not? You said you want to speak today.
Yeah, I had planned on this, Harold, but...
Hey, you're good, you're...
Because you're the mayor, because you've asked me to, I will. How's that sound?
That's okay.
Uh, we, I did address the Board of Works today and kind of brought them up to speed on the recent, intellectual property, the technology event that we held last Tuesday at Roberts Park in the Miller Center. Dr. Roberto Yardo, PhD professor from Purdue University, put on a very informative presentation. It's the third time I've seen it. He was there through the efforts of the Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, which Fayette County has, is one of those counties. There are five counties in the planning commission. And our goal is for the region to become more tech savvy and to overcome the, the digital divide. So that we are more appealing to anyone who would like to bring a business here that needs high-speed internet, broadband or optic.
Fiber.
Fiber optic, yeah. You can tell, I wasn't prepared to do this.
That's all right, you're good at it.
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah. Keep it coming.
Just roll, roll with it.
Yeah. So, at any rate, that was a, a great presentation. If you read about it in the paper, we had about sixty folks come. Franklin County National was good enough to, to buy our supper that night. And it was a good event. We are getting back with Purdue. I've got the paperwork now for Fayette County to do the next step. And then our hope and our goal is to do some sort of public-private exploration on taking fiber optic into the far reaches of the county where there isn't what you would call good service. They're kind of left out. The city proper is pretty good, but the rest of the county is not. There are some that have to bring their kids in so far so that they can complete homework assignments because they don't have service. So, we got some challenges. And it's the same in Randolph, Wayne, Union, Fayette and Rush. Those are the five counties in the commission. And we're, we are working. In fact, our region is, has been picked and selected in the state to, to run with this technology initiative. So, that is one of the things we're working on. Another thing that was mentioned this morning in the Board of Works was the, the ISO rating that Fayette County has received through the efforts of our fire department. We're down from a five to a four, which reduces the insurance, insurance rates somewhat. And your fire chief, Troy Tipton, has a goal of getting it down to a three over the next two years. And Economic Development is committed to, to helping that happen in putting together a, a training site so that we can do the repelling and the, the education for firefighters right here in the, right here in the city. So, I think that's about what I talked about.
Perfect.
There's a myriad of other things we could discuss. How much time you guys got? I can go on and on and on. You know how old people are, you get them started and they'll shout out.
I've heard that about you.
Have you heard that? Thanks, Debbie. Any questions?
Regarding that ISO, that's important for people to know. Because they have to, they should inform their insurance companies. Cause I remember not two, not that long ago, that we were a six and an eight. So, down to a four is really good and a three would be even better. But the viewers really should contact their insurance companies and get that changed because there is a savings.
I agree. Any other questions? If not, I will sit down. Thank you, mayor.
I believe utilities will toot their own horn, but I'll be the forum. I think they are a big, I see the fire chief shaking his head. It's how much percent?
Utilities is forty, fire fifty, and dispatch is ten percent.
So, utilities is forty percent of the ISO rating. And they always work well with our department. All three groups brought it up, so.
Congratulations to all of you. Cause that's significant, that's a big deal.
Okay, another thing too, I'd just like to thank all the people that serve on boards. Cause you know, they're behind the scene. Nobody knows about the alcoholic beverage board, you know, or the, the, any board, airport board. And they do a lot of work that we don't see. And I just want to thank them all for what they do. Because they do put in a lot of time and a lot of them is unpaid jobs. It just, they just want to do a service to their community. And so, they serve on them. So, I'd like to say thanks to all them for doing it. And so, I'm going, going down.
I have something miscellaneous, I may speak. This may be valid or not, but I'd like to share it with everyone. In a past conversation, I've been kind of sticking my nose in on this new trash truck that we're getting ready to buy. And I've had conversation with Darryl with this. And I spoke to a gentleman that says on their trash trucks, they have a weight limit. They've actually gone up a measure, scale, that when that arm goes out, if that container weighs over seventy pounds, it will not pick it up. And with the wear and tear that that truck sees on those arms. And if you drive through the streets sometimes, you see everything but cement blocks, drywall, lumber and what have you. And Darryl even went to the point saying they could get a Volkswagen in that they would. But I think it would be well worth our while to take a look at that and see if we're going to purchase a new truck and put a weight restriction on it. Because I think it would reduce the wear on that arm as far as capturing that and picking it up. Cause those trash containers get heavy.
They do.
I think in the ordinance, it's actually written up with a weight limit on it, if I remember correctly.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't check the ordinance.
I think it is.
Even if there is.
Yeah, but if you can't enforce it.
Right. Yeah, there's nothing on the truck.
That's what I thought. I don't think there's anything on the truck, that's what I'm saying.
Could the, could this, the old truck be retrofitted with something like that or not?
It should be able to.
I think so.
That's, that sounds.
It's something we can check into, have mechanics check into it.
I've talked to a couple of different people.
And if they need to talk to Richmond, I'll, I'll send them that way. If Richmond does do it, right?
I, I don't know, I didn't get that far. But I've talked to two different people and their trucks have them. And I don't want to admit their names here because it would go farther with it. But I talked to Darryl about it. He seemed to think it's a good idea. But you, if, if I'm right, that arm actually weighs like a thousand times a day. Is that correct? Something like that.
Sometimes less, sometimes more.
But if you've got a container that weighs a hundred pound and you do that for a half a day, that's a lot of wear on that cylinder. Plus the grab, the pressure on that grab arm. And I think we should, in my personal opinion, I think we should investigate it. Cause I think it would be money well spent.
Okay.
Is there a suggested weight limit on that truck that perspects? I mean, do they, do they state what, you know, what the safe weight limit or whatever is?
I honestly don't know.
There should be, I would think.
Well, we think it would be seventy or less.
No, I really think, I really thought it was in that ordinance.
I'll look, I'll look.
Maybe. With that in mind, we've already let it up bid, right? Yeah. So, that would have to be an additional. Cause we wanted to add that to the, if it doesn't already come on the ordinance, then that would be an additional that we would have to.
I'd just see what the manufacturer requested or recommended. Man, I can't talk. The manufacturer recommended weight limit in on that. They should have a recommended weight.
I would think so.
They did on these trucks that I'm talking about, seventy pound.
Yeah, I would think so.
That's what manufacturer.
And when it went to pick it up, that, however that, that pressure gauge set, if, if, when it lifted it, if it was above seventy pound, it ungrasped it, set it back down and it went on its merry way.
Something to look into.
Absolutely.
I mean, they're two hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Got to make them last as long as we can.
Well, we might as well get as much on this new truck as we can to make it last longer than this one we've got has.
I agree.
Okay, is there any more miscellaneous?
You're welcome.
Is there any more miscellaneous?
Yes, I do have one more thing. And with the additional that we're advertising for the park, as I said, we are funded for phase one. But two hundred thousand of it is from the DNR grant. And that's a reimbursable grant. And what I need to do is ask for two hundred thousand dollars additional for general, other contractual. So, it's sitting there, ready to cover the construction costs in case we don't get the grant money back in a timely manner. Chances are pretty good that we won't touch that money. And then we'll be able to get that money in quickly to cover the cost. But I've got to just have it there just in case. It's just, before you advertise to bid anything, you've got to make sure your money is allocated or appropriated first.
That is right.
So, you want to go ahead and do, do it?
And when you talk about phase one, you're talking about the.
River's Edge.
Not something at the current park, but.
Right, now, this is, will be the phase one of River's Edge. And it'll be just the, like the amphitheater and it's.
Concession.
Concessions and playground.
So, you want to go ahead and advertise all the?
I want to go ahead and ask permission to advertise for that as well at the same time.
We've got, we already got the grant committed though, right?
The grant, yes, but we have to.
Make sure we have the funds available before the grant comes in.
Right.
So, it may just be kind of like a little loan.
Right, it's just going to be sitting there just in case I don't get the other in a timely manner to cover it.
Can we do that without it being on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's really tied with that as well.
Yeah, okay.
Where would we pull it from?
It'd be, I'm asking to do it of general, just because I have a, I know there's more money there than the park. But if I have to use it, then the grant will reimburse general.
Okay, is there a motion to advertise for two hundred thousand out of the general?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Then we'll go on down to the public forum. Is there anybody would like to speak? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Adjourn.